こんばんは今ヘキかな仮面としていっちゃスイッテラス恋と性
This... This'll show Malakai. Come on, come on, get up, get up. Come on. Just blend in with the other cats. Just blend in. There we go. See? Sitting in that corner, you're perfectly fine. Shoot, is that them? Should leave. Jeez. Ooh, piece of iron. It sounds like the mobs are coming down here more often. Wonder if Rover's home. Should probably talk to them. Rover!
Uh, hello?
Yo, Rover.
Oi. Yeah, what's up?
So... Uh, here. Can I enter your house? I need to tell you something.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay. I did something. Something that I think will make Malakai act.
What do you mean, you did something?
See. You know how Malakai has a cat?
Uh-huh.
So, I hid away Malakai's cat. And, if they really aren't who they say they are, I think they're gonna act.
I mean... Wait, so you hid the cat?
Yeah, I put the cat... I put the cat in Ed's house.
Put the cat in Ed's house?
Yes.
Are you...
They have a lot of cats, so... I don't think they'll notice for a little bit. Oh, it'll definitely get back at the Malakai's hands, but I would just wanna see how he reacts to the situation first. If he has any nefarious intentions.
Huh. Hmm. I mean, alright, but if they find it, won't they blame Ed?
I don't think so. I mean... If so, I could just... I could just say that I found the cat wandering and I thought it was one of Ed's, so I put it in Ed's house. So I don't think-
Okay, I guess that's...
Yeah, I don't, I don't think Ed... Ed should take any da- eh, any blame for this. I don't know who it is yet, so I'm not gonna harm him at all.
Okay, yeah. I guess I see what you mean.
I don't want them to know perfectly it was me, so... So they might try-
Do you think-
They might try to hide their true selves then.
Yeah, do you think... I don't know. I feel like Malakai would like freak out over something like this. I don't know.
Maybe.
Like, I think they might like try and like talk to people and interrogate people. Huh.
I think that while Malakai might seem like he's freaking out, might be... See? It's what Malakai does to this. If he understands that it was a misunderstanding... Or if he tries to exact revenge on me, is where I'll see his character.
Huh.
Yeah.
Guess, but I mean, how many...
Wait.
You know, I mean, I guess this is a good idea, but you know, how many cats can you steal till... You know, something happens? Like, how far are we gonna keep going with this sort of thing?
Uh... Well, I don't really plan on doing this thing much. I do plan on just... Just confirming certain things. You know?
Yeah.
Just making sure that people are, you know, who they say they are. Until...
Yeah.
Basically, just kind of until, you know, until we're comfortable. Until we know that... That's who they are.
Yeah, I think I understand what you're saying.
Yeah. Hello?
There's someone.
Uh...
Um...
Hello?
Hey.
Uh... We're having a town meeting right now, over at Town Hall. So...
A meeting?
Yeah. So you two could come right now. It's actually pretty urgent.
Uh, okay.
Alright.
Thanks.
Okay.
I'll see you there.
Okay.
Uh...
Uh, okay, before we go, just wanna... I really hope this isn't about the cat, cuz I didn't think he'd like blow this out of portions. Anyways, I guess we should make, get a move on.
Okay. Yep. Oh boy. Yeah, no, I mean, are we just gonna lie if it's cuz of the cat? Or are we...
Uh, well, I guess just, just basically, my advice to you is pretend like you don't know anything. I know, I'll just like, like I said, I'll make it look like a misunderstanding. About the cat. If it's about the cat. Um, I hope it's not about anything else, though.
Yeah.
Alright.
Hope.
Hello?
I was paying for them.
Um, welcome to the meeting. Um, actually, uh, this is very important, uh... So, first off, uh, before we start, has anyone seen, um, Whopper?
My, my, my cat, my cat! He's brown, he has gold eyes, um, very, very fluffy, very nice.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This isn't what the meeting's about, by the way. This isn't... Um, but it's just, we're this, yeah, okay. So this morning, we were out looking for, uh, Whopper, and while we were, we were going up the hill right over there, we came across something that's kind of alarming. Um... Someone built a cellar for people up there? Um, this is kinda concerning, because why would one of you build a cellar? Here, my bad. Let me take off my shield, I'm sorry. Why would, why would one of you willingly build a cellar to trap a person in? I mean, we're all in the same boat. I mean, I could take you all to it right now if you wanna go see it, but it's up there on the hill. It's made out of obsidian. And it's definitely man-made, and it's definitely for a person to be locked up in. Like...
Yeah. Boring.
Are we not supposed to trust each other? I mean, we're all here on this island, we're all in the same boat, so why would we willingly lock one of you, one of us in a cellar?
Yeah. I mean, I trust all you guys. I mean, I thought I did. Why do you build a cell?
It's up on the hill. If, if you go to the, if you go to the... Go to Town Square, right over there. Um, it's on the hill. You go, if you go right.
It's built into the side of the mountain.
You're not gonna be able to see it. It's in one of the stone... It's in one of the stone pyramids.
Yes, I see. Very interesting.
It's in one of the stone spires. Yeah, wha- um... Who built it?
I mean, I didn't build it, but wouldn't it make sense for one to be there?
Why? I mean, why would you wanna lock someone away? Why?
I mean, I wouldn't wanna lock anyone, but... I feel like it, you know? What if one of us were to just... I don't know. Just like go crazy and, you know?
Just snap.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I don't really like... I mean, I don't know. It's not completely out of the question for that to happen, I guess.
It's just more alarming because it, it wasn't even brought up to us either. Like, it wasn't talked about. It was just built, so I don't think it was for good intention, if I'm 100% honest.
Malakai has a point. I mean, if, like, I would be more fine with, let me, take it from me, alright? I'm, I'm a guard, alright? I, I'm okay with having a cellar, but not if it's not brought up with the rest of the party. I mean... There's, there's also two of us on the island that aren't even at this meeting. We have Skull Splitter and Marsh. I mean... I don't, like, they probably don't even know either, so it's just alarming that somebody built this... This cellar and nobody else was brought up? I mean, it just feels like it has ill intentions. Like, someone wanted to keep it hush-hush for some bad reasons, you know? I just...
Hmm.
I know Skull Splitter, since she never comes down.
Okay, I-
Yeah, and then I've got your house.
Okay, well, we're getting rid of it, right? I mean...
I'm, I don't think we should get rid of it. I mean, whether it was built for good or bad intentions, I mean, it's worth to have.
For what?
I disagree. I'm sorry, but I think that this is... To have a cellar to lock up one of us? I mean, we're all in the same boat. Like, we don't know anything. We... All I have are, like, you guys. I don't wanna like... Now, I, like, it, it already pains me to think that one of you would have the ill intentions of making a cellar to lock one of us up in. I mean... And also just not tell us? That's...
Well...
That's really sketchy.
I mean, who said it was one of us? There's like two people who aren't at this meeting.
I highly doubt it was, okay, you know what? Marsh isn't ruled out of the question, but I highly doubt it was Skull Splitter, considering she's... Riff is all the way out over in the forest and we never see her. She doesn't come towards us. We're, I guess, civilization. She doesn't come towards us.
Yeah, she kinda seems like she doesn't really wanna be associated with us, like, even if that's a bit untrustworthy, it doesn't seem like she would go out of her way to, you know, lock one of us up.
And she's not even that bad of a person. She also helps us. We, I go over all the time and ask her for materials and she gladly helps us out. Even she's complying, even she isn't... Even she understands the situation that we're all in. We're all having the same problem here.
Yeah, but... I don't know. I think it just makes sense, cuz to have at least some form of like, like, like a holding cell at least, because, you know, like... That's true. What if one of us does snap? What if someone just decides to go like haywire and kind of attack everyone? I mean, it's not out of the question, since maybe my chicken's already gone. Like, what if some, one of us is next?
Well-
Well, what if you snap?
I mean, I wouldn't. I wouldn't kill anyone.
Well, I wouldn't. I wouldn't kill anyone. I don't think Malakai would. I don't think Nepatis would. I don't think Bright Eyes would.
Well, I mean-
Are you saying that you think one of us is just gonna snap? What about you? Like you said, you're chickens, Dad. You have a motive.
Well, I'm not gonna snap cuz of a chicken. I mean, like, of course, yeah, I love my, you know, Bonk Jr., but like, I'm saying that the chicken died cuz of you. So, that's not out of the question that you'd kill something else.
Yeah, I killed an animal. We kill animals. We have a pen to kill animals. You've killed animals. You mean, it-
This, this is getting off topic. I don't think that this is something that we should address during the meeting.
Okay, you know what?
Another thing is though-
I don't think-
Another thing is though, like, even if one of us does like, you know, go on a killing spree or something, like, we all are different people and like, you know, like, different races and stuff. I don't know exactly how we would go about locking someone up even if we had to. Like, we would have to make a specific cell for that person.
That's a good point, actually.
True, the cells... I don't think-
We don't know the strength of other people.
I don't think Grim could fit in the cell. Yeah, I don't, Riff couldn't, can't fit in the cell either. Only people who can fit in the cell are uh, Nepatis, Bright Eyes, Malakai, me, and you, and you, Diego.
Well, maybe that means we have people who the suspect is going after. We have a motive.
We don't-
Who hates us.
No, no, I don't wanna talk about a motive.
Who hates us, Nepatis.
I don't think anybody hates you.
Nobody... Okay, listen. We should just, we should just get rid of the cell. It just makes the most logical sense.
No, we shouldn't get rid of the cell.
No, we can, we can regulate it. Now that we know about it, why not use it for good?
Let's put it up, no, let's put it to a vote.
Alright.
Okay, people who wanna keep the cell, go to the left side of the room, or this side, and people who wanna get rid of it, go to this side, my right. Alright, perfect.
Ugh.
Four to three. We win. We get rid of the cell.
But what if the other two wanna keep the cell?
Well, if they do, they can bring up their opinion if they're here. It's their fault for not attending.
It's true.
That's very true.
They're not here, it's...
It's a Town Hall meeting. Only the people who come get an opinion.
Hmm.
Besides, Skull Splitter doesn't really live in this town anyways where the cell is, and then the other person is just kind of... Even if they were here and they took your side, it would be a tie and be up for more discussion anyways. So I think for now, we should just get rid of it, and if it does become an actual thing where we need one later, then we can discuss it as a group and not somebody randomly building it.
Plus, we could build better cells together that way, if we need them.
Hmm.
It's better to build a jail as a community than one person building a secret creepy jail and then we're just like, whoa, why did this here, you know?
Okay, but that still doesn't, okay, I, well, so we're getting rid of the cell, but that also just doesn't get rid of the fact, who built it?
I don't know.
We have a higher possibility, ability that it was one of us, and I know for a fact that it wasn't us, because we were the ones who found it, and we were the most confused when we did.
It can't be used, since you guys wanna get rid of it.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Plus, I don't like working with obsidians.
Well, what are your guys' opinions? Who do you think did it?
I mean, I don't know. I, I guess Grim builds on the server a lot.
Oh. Whoa.
I mean, Grim, you, they have a point, I mean... I'm not, I'm not gonna point fingers. I'm not gonna point fingers at anyone. I don't want to. I don't wanna do that, but... They do have a logical point. Grim, you do build a lot on the server. You were the one who built Town Hall. You were the one who built Town Square. You built your mansion over there. I mean, you... You have done a lot, I mean...
Built my house.
I mean, whoever did it, I mean, just come clean. Like, it's better for you to come clean instead of just
Exactly.
Like, it's not a matter of like, oh, we're gonna lock you in your own cell. Like, no, it's just, why would you build a cell and not tell the rest of the group? I mean, we're all in this together. It's just, this is just... It's just upsetting.
Hmm. I mean, I guess, but we're getting rid of it anyways, so it doesn't really matter too much anymore.
Well, it matters a little bit, because we have the, somebody is, obviously has ulterior motives building this. I'd like to know the reason why they built it.
Okay, you know what? Never mind. No one else is gonna say anything. Um... Who has the proper materials, um, for getting rid of the cell?
And chain that diamond?
I, I know, I have it. I have a diamond pickaxe. Who else?
Uh, Grim.
What's, what's Netherite, alright?
Netherite, yeah.
Can I see?
Be careful.
Oh, wow. This is, this feels so smooth.
Where did you get it?
From the nether.
The nether?
You went back there?
Oh, you just went in there?
Alone?
Yeah. I have the materials to go in and survive.
Oh, wow.
I have Netherite armor as well.
I hear there's lots of good materials in the nether.
What's Netherite armor?
It's stronger than-
Seems like a, a heavier material, almost like stronger and thicker.
It does, it, you haven't ma, you, it's, you have enchantments on it.
Netherite.
It's behind you, Nepatis. It's behind you.
Yeah, break the steps, break the steps.
Alright, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go, I'll just go alone. It's okay. Malakai, come on, let's go.
Yeah, yeah.
Malakai and I are gonna go, we're gonna go break the, we're gonna go take down the cell.
Alright. Good luck.
Hey, Ed.
Yes.
How did you get that Netherite stuff?
Well, you gotta go mining the nether and get ancient debris.
Mining in another? Is there like a specific way to do it? Like, an area?
Uh, just do it. Yeah, just, I use beds. Explode the place up.
Beds?
Oh, yeah, cuz beds explode in, 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 in there.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, Rover. Can we talk?
Yeah. Uh, yeah, do you wanna head back to Elias again?
Okay.
This has been a mess.
Boy, oh boy, oh boy, oh boy.
Okay, wait, so... What do we do now?
Um, oh man, oh man, oh man. They're gonna take a town.
Mm-hmm.
If it's down, then what happens? When somebody attacks?
You can always-
I don't wanna have to like, I don't wanna have to attack them back. This is supposed to be my peaceful method of of diffusing the situation, but I can't really explain that to them, cuz if I tell them, then...
Then they'll know you built it.
Well, I don't care about that. I was planning on telling them that I built it after anyways.
Oh, alright.
What I can't let them know is before, I wanna, since Elias is the one taking it down, I want to tell him. We need to separate them now. We need to ta, we need to give them the ultimate trial of trustworthiness. And if they succeed that trial, then I can tell them about, about, about the jail cell, and, and then everything can go good, and then we could all trust each other, a, and then we could all live in peace while we wait for somebody to rescue us. We can all live in peace for the rest of our days on this island. But that can't happen, cuz...
Okay, I mean-
Cuz back there, Malakai really did look princely. I think he's gonna assume his role as a prince again. He's definitely the person to like... Or is, he's definitely the person. I think we need to separate them, but just, how are we gonna separate them?
Alright, yeah, I was gonna ask. I mean, how are you?
What does Elias care about most? If I could tempt him with that.
I mean, the cat's already gone. You could already, you could say something about the cat, or maybe-
I don't really wanna bring up the cat yet.
Okay, I mean... I mean, back at the, back at the hall, there's the, what was it called? The edhead?
Hold that edhead? Town Hall?
Yeah, back at Town Hall.
The thing that Elias cares about most is Malakai.
Mm-hmm.
That's why we have to separate them in the first place. To separate them, I have to provide him something for Malakai without Malakai actually being able to be there.
Huh.
Is there something enticing? Something enticing in a place that Malakai can't be? Nether. Netherite!
Yeah, back at the, yeah.
If, how do I word this? Okay. If I present it as a material to, using it to protect Malakai, then there's no way he won't wanna come with me as soon as possible, and as soon as that happens, here Rover, oh, when I go talk to Elias, cuz he's definitely not gonna wanna leave Malakai alone. Maybe bring up the idea of like babysitting Malakai, or just like hang out around and making sure he's safe while he's gone, and then...
Not have to talk to Malakai.
Yeah, I'll talk to Elias in the nether, see if I can get something out of him. Maybe I'll... Maybe I can try putting my life in danger and seeing if he saves me. I could try doing that, but then again, if I put my life in real danger, even him trying may cost me my life. So I don't wanna, I won't do anything too risky. I won't, I may, I may not do anything risky at all.
Okay, but how are you gonna get him out there, that is? Cuz he, I know he already doesn't like us by wanting to keep the, keep the jail and wanting to keep...
Well, it doesn't matter whether he likes us or not right now. If I present him with something he can't pass on, he's gonna take it.
Hmm. Alright.
Yeah, and once you're alone with Malakai, yeah, I, I truly think it'll work. Hopefully, once you're alone with Malakai, you can get him to show his true colors. And then, since I have faith in them, then after this, we can all be friends, and I'll tell them about the cell, and I'll tell them my plans of making friends with everyone. But before they take down that cell, I need to go stop Elias. Okay.
Alright, alright.
Alright, are you okay with this, Rover? Sorry, I've been kinda like stringing you along, but...
Yeah, I think I'll manage.
Okay. Seriously, thank you for your help. I just, I want everybody to be safe. For everyone's safety. Okay.
Yeah.
We gotta... You gotta come with me, Rover.
I mean, you can... If you want me to come with you, I mean, you could-
Well, yeah, you gotta, well, you gotta be there, so that if you're the person, like, if you're the person who's with me, if we're both there when they split off, you'll be the one he looks to. Uh, cuz you're the pers, closest person.
For Malakai?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, yeah.
Alright. But they were just there. I don't know.
Oh, boy.
Did you see where they went?
Um... I think they went down this way. I'm not too sure. I can't really see them through the spyglass.
Think they went up to the cell?
Um...
Let's check.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Elias did say he was gonna tear it down, so I guess it would make sense. Oh.
Yeah, I mean, he already, oh.
Okay. I guess, let's talk to them.
Alright. Um...
Elias!
Y- what's up?
I, I have a proposition for you.
Okay, what?
Uh, so, you remember hearing that thing?
Why do you have your shields out?
Huh? I always have my shields out.
You're coming up, yeah, well, you mean, you're coming up-
Here, I'll, I'll back up, I'll back up. You can still hear it from there, right?
Yes, I can.
Okay, okay. So...
Don't get too close to the edge.
I have a proposition for you. I want you, I want- I want us to go to the nether, so we can get some of this Netherite.
Why do you need me? Can't you just go yourself? Besides, I'm busy, I'm taking apart the-
Well, I'm really weak. I'm not a very good fighter. And there's a lot of dangerous things in the nether. And I know you're already a Malakai's bodyguard, so I was wondering if you could do that for me? Kind of? And also, it's not just- it's not- you won't be getting nothing from it, you'll also be getting Netherite of your own. Because along with another you mine, I'll give you half of my Netherite. This- this way, you can have extra Netherite to give to Malakai, so that he can have extra armor. And so that way, if any like monsters or mobs come after him, you know? Even if you're like separated for some reason, he can still be protected.
Okay, but why should I even help you? Last night, we got into a fight. I don't even wanna talk to you right now, I could just go get it myself.
Well, I- well, I was just offering you some extra Netherite. I don't-
Hey, hey, li- listen, I mean, maybe- maybe it would be good, you know, I mean, talking and maybe getting it all out, figuring stuff out. Pl- plus he's right, we could use the extra protection and we were just talking about how good that stuff seemed. Maybe this is a good opportunity.
I don't- You have a point, are you- Are you sure about me leaving you here by yourself?
I'll- I'll be fine. I have- I have things to do anyways. I have- I have an agenda, it's fine. I'll be okay.
Okay, but try to stay near the town, please. Don't go off too far. At least- Make sure someone can see you, alright?
Of course. Promise.
Alright, four eyes? Yeah, sure. I'll watch you in the nether.
Uh, okay, okay. Thank you. Uh, so- So, I got some information from Ed. Uh, he told me that we're gonna wanna use beds? Cuz they blow up in the nether for some reason?
I- I saw a bunch of beds in the- in the storage house.
Hello? Hello?
Yeah, there was a bunch of beds in the storage house. We can go get those and we can make more.
Okay.
Um- Alright, um- Malakai, I'll- I'll see you later, okay?
Alright, have fun!
Alright, bye.
Bye-bye!
Okay, um-
Yeah, I just- sorry, it was kind of like something that I thought of, but like, better to get Netherite sooner rather than later because uh, you never know what's gonna happen. You know?
I guess so.
It's kind of my philosophy. Yeah. I feel like I used to know a lot, but now without my memories, I kinda feel hopeless. Then again, I don't know my past life. For all I know, I could've been a bumbling idiot who knew nothing.
Right here.
Huh?
The beds.
I guess I didn't see them.
I'll hold on to them. If they explode, then well, like you said, well, it'll be my job to handle them.
Okay.
Let me go by my house and then we can uh set off our journey. To the portal. Uh, have you been there ever since or no?
Uh, I've been there like, once. Think just to like, get some- some of the blocks on the floor, cuz I thought they looked interesting, but it scared me, so I left almost immediately.
Alright. It's not worrying at all.
Yeah, I'm not- like I said, I'm not like strong at all. So, I have a little confidence in myself.
Yeah, where'd you go?
Uh, I went to my house. I- I won- I realized I wanted to make another pickaxe because my pickaxe is about to break.
Well, take your time, I guess. Um... Yeah. So you know like where it is, right? Or where to find the Netherite?
Uh, I believe it's just deep underground and I think that's it. I think it's deep underground and then Ed told me to use beds and I guess that's- I guess that's all.
Let's- let's grab some food really fast.
Okay.
Alright, I got food. Let's- let's go. Okay.
Sorry for that.
No, you're fine. Take your time. After you.
No, it's good, what?
You know-
Huh.
I get you don't like me.
Oh, I- I don't- I don't dislike you. No!
No, 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 it's okay, you can- I don't care, I'm gonna be honest.
Oh, okay.
I'm not dumb, I'm not stupid. What is this?
Okay, I don't-
There's a redstone.
Redstone, that's- Remember those?
I've been seeing a lot of this actually.
Something.
No, okay, it doesn't fucking matter. I understand you don't like me. And like, that's fine, that's cool with me. But you keep it with me, okay? I don't want you to go and- I don't want you to bring your discomfort towards me to Malakai, alright?
Okay.
I'm not stupid. Alright, you can stop playing dumb around me.
Where are you?
I'm well aware of how you think of me. Where do we go?
What do you think I think of you?
It doesn't matter, where do we go? Do you want the Netherite or not?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I don't- I don't know, I guess... Should we take the bridge? It seemed to go down pretty far.
Sure.
Uh, the bridge is over here. Uh, just kind of down here. Okay. I gotta think, I gotta think. Is there some way of just creating a situation where I can-
Um-
Show that last-
I know. You don't like me. It's bluntly obvious. What I wonder is why do you act so- why do you play dumb?
Play dumb to what?
All the time.
I don't play dumb, I- maybe I'm just genuinely stupid in your eyes?
You know what, maybe so. Who knows?
Hmm.
Is this?
Uh, I wonder if we're far down enough. Man, is that sea level right there? Would that be sea level? That's right, the stairs keep going down here. Okay. Hmm. I guess this is a good place to start going down. This lava though is kinda freaking me out. Okay.
How does the bed ex- what do you mean the bed explodes?
I don't know, that's what Crim said. (cough) Oh my god! Oh, what happened? I heard an explosion! Oh, what? W- was that the bed?
That was the bed.
Okay.
Let's just go.
Let me put out some of this fire. What?
Oh, I guess we can't actually get down here.
My water evaporated. Oh, that's what, yeah. This- Netherite. I guess it's gonna be a little bit harder than I thought. Find. Oh.
What about here?
Okay.
Uh, no.
What?
It's lava too. Oh wait, no, right here. I guess it's just a pocket.
Okay.
How far?
Uh, I feel like we should go down a few more blocks.
There's this gravel? Okay.
You're supposed to find it underground, so-
I guess so. I mean, what level are we supposed to be at?
Um, I think around fifteen.
Okay. Uh, I think we're here, yep. Alright, I guess we just start going.
Okay.
Here. Uh... Watch out.
Oh.
We're back up.
Oh, jeez.
Okay. Um... I don't see anything, so-
Hmm, I wonder if it's rare?
I don't even know what it looks like. You know, chronically, I don't think I've ever seen Netherite with- with texture.
This is Blackstone.
I don't think I've ever seen Netherite, to be honest.
Yeah. I mean... I mean, if we just mine everything that looks new, eventually one of them will be Netherite.
I guess so. Alright, just watch out, okay?
Oh, okay, okay. I'll stand back.
I'm not trying to have you explode. Watch- watch out, watch out, watch out. There's some lava.
Oh, jeez.
Okay.
Wa- watch out.
It's fine, it's fine.
Whoa. Man, this is really terrifying.
Yeah, I guess so. I mean, it doesn't feel too bad. Just don't fuck up and go the wrong way. Would it be around Blackstone?
Um, maybe, I don't know, I don't- huh. Oh, jeez. That didn't look nearly as effective as the other explosions. If we're going for sol- uh, score space, I guess maybe we should probably not blow it up around Blackstone.
Yeah, okay, this isn't the way to go. There's just a lot of Blackstone. Let's go this way instead.
Okay.
So, you and Rover have been talking a lot, I see?
Yeah, I'm trying to make friends.
Started on our house.
Well, I don't know, that's what Rover liked doing, so I thought it might be a fun leisurely activity.
Oh yeah, vandalizing someone's home?
I don't know, you seemed kind of chill about it last time, so I thought it was just a funny thing that you two did.
No, I yelled at Rover last time.
Oh. I guess I didn't pick up on that.
Yeah, I guess not. I guess not. Yeah, you two seem all buddy-buddy now. This is- we gotta go this way. There's so much Blackstone.
Yeah.
I don't think this is a good area, I'm being honest with you.
Oh, there's no air- there's no more Blackstone over here. Oh, you also found a spot. Oh, jeez.
I don't- I don't see anything, I'm gonna be honest, I don't.
I really hope it isn't a hoax. Oh jeez, there really is a lot of Blackstone around here.
I mean, how would it be a hoax? I mean, he did find it.
No, I just meant the location. Maybe he was like making fun of me by telling me the wrong direction. I don't know, probably not. I guess I'm just a little paranoid cuz I haven't found any yet.
Yeah. Here, watch out, I'm gonna- Oh, it's right there! Oh wait, no, it's not, just kidding. Oh wait, it is right there!
What the hell?
This must be it!
Is-
Watch out!
Looks like it has eyes on it!
It's disgusting, okay. Here, you hold it.
Okay. Huh. Interesting. Is there any more around here?
I don't know, I mean... Probably. I wouldn't- I don't know, I don't know. Watch out.
Oh! Oh, lava, lava, back up, back up, back up!
Get out of there, go, 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 go! Are you okay? Are you okay?
I- I'm good, but what about you? Are you good? Oh man, I wish I hadn't used my water bucket earlier. Well, you're on fire right now!
Yeah, so?
Oh, not anymore. You're okay with that?
I mean, it's- I've had worse, I would assume. I don't know, I don't like feel it, it's not that bad. Careful going through here.
Oh jeez.
Alright, careful coming down, there's some lava.
Yeah.
Alright. Oh shit, back up, back up, back up, back up! Why did you place a block?
Well, I was making a staircase down. There's a lot of lava around here.
There is indeed. There is a lot of lava, actually. Back up, go, back up, back up.
Okay.
Just stay back, alright, let me deal with this.
Maybe we're like, maybe this area is like an underground lava like- like lava lake? Is that a thing? I guess so.
It looks like it. Again, back up, just don't follow. I'll tell you when you can come.
Okay, okay.
When it's clear. I don't need you going to go up in flames to here. Alright, come this way.
Okay.
Alright, get ready to back up.
Okay.
Oh, shit.
Oh, there's lava right next to you.
It's okay, it doesn't matter. Just cover up the top.
Oh! Uh, is there anything I can give you? A golden apple, here. There you go.
I'm fine, I don't need it.
Oh.
I'm not even hungry.
Okay.
Huh. I know, I don't feel it, I'm gonna be honest. It doesn't really affect me too bad.
Okay.
Hurry. Alright.
How- how can he not feel it? Just being near this lava is terrifying enough, but this guy's bathing in it and he's okay.
Alright, back up. Alright, yeah, you're good, you're good.
Okay.
Here, give me a second, I'm gonna-
Oh! Oh, okay. Oh, there's lava, back up!
Yeah, no, nothing. Alright, let's continue. Uh, we can go this way.
Okay.
Oh my god, I keep- There we go, okay. Um... Look around, tell me if you see anything, like clear the fire away.
Okay.
Do you see anything or no?
No, I do not see anything.
This shit- this shit must be fucking rare then.
Yeah.
Cuz I'm not seeing anything.
Right now, I only have enough to make like a shovel. Oh! Oh jeez, are you okay?
Yeah, I'm fine, why?
I'm just really surprised that you can withstand all of this lava.
I mean, armor is probably taking the beating from it, but... I feel pretty fine. Uh, back up? This is exploding?
Okay.
Alright, back up one more time?
Okay.
Or just get over on the other side?
Oh, okay, oh! Wow, there really is none, huh?
No, no, I don't, I don't see a thing. You know what, I think we should just... I mean, I guess we could just turn back, I mean, come back another time.
I mean, how many beds do you have left?
I mean, I have a lot, but... I'm really getting tired of this. We're not finding anything, so, I mean, I don't wanna keep looking.
I found some!
What's?
Yeah, I found some, just by mining into the wall a little bit.
Here, move, 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 move!
Oh, okay, okay, uh, uh, I, I'm, I'm right under it. Here's your bed back.
Okay, well, I guess, I guess we're gonna just keep looking then. What happens if I don't place a block in front of it, what happens? Am I gonna...
I feel like...
Don't do that, 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 don't ever do that, don't ever fucking do that!
Yeah, if it explodes, I assume it would do, at least some damage. Uh, strange to think that... That lava is less effective than a bed, in here.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, it's, I mean, it's an explosion, so...
Yeah. Oh, jeez.
Oh, there's two more!
Wow, there's three!
Really?
Yeah!
Oh, there is three!
Maybe we were just getting really unlucky earlier.
Do you think this is enough? I mean, should we just head back, or...
I have two, so five, that would... I guess that's enough to make a helmet, or an axe, or a sword, or a... Pickaxe. Trying to think of things you could do with five. Interesting.
You know what, let's, let's try to get, a few more.
Yeah.
And then, at least, let's, let's just go till the beds are done.
Yeah.
So have you like, remembered anything? New, at all, or?
Uh... Not particularly. I've been trying... But, every flower I put in that shrine hasn't worked so far.
I don't think, that's gonna work.
I mean, I've, well, at this point, I've given up. I put a piece of kelp in there, and I don't even, know if I've gone back to check it. It was the last thing I could think of that was close enough to a flower. Oh! Jeez, you flew back, are you okay?
Yeah, I'm fine, I hurt like a bitch though.
If you ever, feel like you're damaged enough... I'll give you my golden apple.
Okay, thanks. But I don't think I'll need it.
Okay. Oh.
I, I, our beds are running low, only a form are left, so...
Okay.
This might be our, I mean, this might be the end of our journey.
Oh, well... Hopefully we find enough, armor pieces to... Well, for everyone's safety. There's another one! Oh, there's lava too! Ah!
Get out of the fire.
I, it's fine.
I'll pick it up, don't worry.
Okay. You think there's more of it?
Uh, maybe, I don't know, I mean, we'll set off another explosion. Find out.
Oh, there is, there's two more!
There is, yeah. Alright, throw me yours, really quick? We have eight, alright, perfect, I think this is, I mean, we could just set off these two, these are the last beds anyways, so we can just see if we can find any more, but...
Yeah, let's see if we can get lucky right at the end.
For each, alright?
Well, no, you'll get six and I'll get two.
Oh, are you sure?
Yeah, I wanna make this trip worth your while, plus, you're doing most of the work.
Alright, thanks. Can I be fine with that?
I don't know, single person who wouldn't be fine with that. I wish I could say that, but maybe I do, maybe I've forgotten them. Oh jeez. I'm sad.
Well... It's okay! It's alright, bud, maybe soon. You know, something will happen, we'll get more memories.
Hopefully.
I mean, I don't really, know, how, but alright, I think we, I think it's time to go back. I don't see anything. That was a pretty good adventure. We got, we got eight, so... It's pretty, you know, it's pretty worth our while, I'd say we did pretty good.
Yeah, I think, I think we did, pretty good.
Um...
I think I need to do something drastic.
Okay, well... Give me a second, I gotta sort through my inventory really quick.
Okay. Ow. As I'm just kind of excited to get out of here.
Okay. Let me just... Yeah, let's find the portal, let's go back to the portal, and then...
Okay.
We can head home, oh, you left me completely, okay.
Oh, sorry, I was a little bit...
No, no, it's, it's fine, it's fine, it's fine, I don't, I don't really mind.
Uh, Elias? Elias?
Sorry, the voices were just speaking in my head, and I gotta like...
Uh, uh, Elias? I'm, I'm a bit trapped here.
What, what happened, what'd you do?
I, I think I took a wrong turn. I'm trapped behind the lava. He saved me.
There. Over here. Yeah, down here.
Th- thank you!
Yeah, don't, don't, don't worry, don't gotta be weird about it, just... Where do we go? Do you remember how to get out?
Uh, no, not really. But I think... I think if we just follow our trail, we'll eventually be able to get out of here.
Oh, wait, yeah, right here, perfect.
Okay. Let's, let's go home. Oh jeez. This, was a good trip, wasn't it?
Yeah, I guess so, um, well, we have netherite now, so...
Yeah.
How do we...
We have a little bit more than...
Do you know where the portal is, or?
Oh, oh, uh, it's up here, ah, s- sorry. It's up here.
No, you're fine, no, take your time.
Up this staircase, yeah.
Alright, yeah, I'd rather get back fast, I'd rather, I, I need to get to Malachi.
Okay, yeah, 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 let's go back fast then.
Yeah, let's just get to the portal, and then...
Honestly? I think Elias is an upstanding guy.
I already think I'm lost, okay.
If everything went well with Rover, then, truly... Perfect worlds will be happening. If everything went well with Malachi, then...
Okay, um...
Then I have no reason to worry.
Perfect.
I have no reason to worry.
Oh shit! Oh shit! Oh shit!
Well, Elias, wha- what happened?
I may or may not have fallen.
You fall? Where? She need me to help you?
Um, okay, I've fallen into...
Oh, I see you.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, uh...
Okay, no, it's okay, I'm out, I'm, I'm fine, I'm okay!
You, you good?
Yeah, no, I'm fine, I'm just, I'm going back up.
Okay.
Jesus Christ! Oh my god!
You, really are tough.
Um... Alright, well, I think it's, I think, we're, we're close to the portal.
Yeah.
Yeah, alright, I think it's... Time.
Okay.
Alright, let's, time to go home.
I said it's time to go home. Huh? Rover? Malachi? Tell me what happened!